Good evening, everyone. I'm calling this committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:00 PM in council chambers. I believe we have one remote electronic attendance.
Yes, your honor, I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Fifth Ward Alderman Sam Moyer at the committee of the whole and the city council meetings of November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Went. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Moyer.
You know, we should do roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Thank you for the reminder. We'll continue with roll call the entire evening because we have someone on line.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we move to our oaths of office. Nicholas Wade.
Well, good evening, mayor and city council. I'd like to offer Nick Wade's family to go ahead and start making their way into the council chambers. All right, you've got everybody here. So this is certainly a proud moment for me. I'm excited to present three candidates to you tonight to be promoted to the next rank. It's kind of a unique position for me. Obviously, I've only been here a short time, but I've gotten to promote these two gentlemen to lieutenant. I promoted them to sergeant as well as Detective Cleaver to administrative, I'm sorry, juvenile sergeant's position. And I've just found that all three of these officers are stellar police officers that represent the city of Moline at the highest levels of professionalism, teamwork, and integrity. And those are the core values that are important to us, that we established together at the Moline Police Department, and I think you'll be able to tell by their bios. So the first candidate, mayor, that I have for you is Lieutenant Nick Wade. Lieutenant Wade began his career at the Moline Department of Corrections in two thousand and eight. He joined the Moline Police Department in two thousand and eleven and has had several positions with the department, including patrol officer, C O P officer, school resource officer at John Deere Middle School, juvenile detective, patrol sergeant, and most recently, the juvenile criminal investigations division sergeant. In that position, as the juvenile C I D sergeant, he was responsible for the implementation of the new police department program with the Center for Youth and Family Solutions, what we call the Police plus Social Work Project, and implementing the partnership into our department. He helped solidify an extremely successful partnership that engaged over nine hundred and sixty-eight individuals with social work that had contact with our department. Lieutenant Wade has been a crisis containment unit team member or our SWAT team since two thousand and fifteen, later became a team leader. He's also an instructor for active shooter response, defensive tactics, and lethal munitions. Lieutenant Wade will be assigned to the Neighborhood Policing Bureau as the division commander of Platoon Two, covering the afternoon patrol shift. Tonight, he is here with his family, his wife Becky, son Hunter, daughter Kate, and uncle Daniel Wade, and his grandmother Sherri Wade. So, mayor, if you would come forward and administer the oath of office to promote Sergeant Nick Wade to lieutenant Nick Wade.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Nicholas Wade.
I, Nicholas Wade.
Having been duly appointed to the rank of lieutenant of the police department.
Have been duly appointed to the rank of lieutenant of the police department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And support the constitution of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
Strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct applicable to police administration.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct applicable to police administration.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the rank of lieutenant of the police department.
Of the rank of lieutenant of the police department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois. According to the best of my judgment.
According to the best of my judgment.
Yes.
So, in our police department, the single gold bar signifies the rank of lieutenant. It's my honor to pin that bar onto your uniform.
Congratulations.
And I'd like to call Daniel Wade forward. Daniel is a sergeant with the West Des Moines Iowa Police Department, and he is the uncle of Lieutenant Wade. And I'd ask, sir, if you would do the honor of pinning his badge onto you. Thanks, family. You can go forward into the horseshoe there, and feel free to take pictures. Once you get into your little family unit, you'd like to take your mask off to take a memorable photo with your pen. Before going, I can ask the elected officials tonight for social distancing purposes.
Chief, could I ask you a second?
Sure.
And I have something for you, too. There you go. Give me your colored box. Nice, because Derek Colson.
So Sergeant Colson, could you come forward, and you can bring your family into the council chambers? Mayor, the next candidate I have to present to you is Sergeant Derek Colson, who'll be promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Lieutenant Colson began his policing career with the Kelowna Police Department in two thousand and eight. He later joined the Moline Police Department in January of two thousand and eleven. Lieutenant Colson has held several positions within the department, including patrol officer, juvenile investigation detective, canine handler, community policing unit detective, and patrol sergeant. He also serves as a team leader of the crisis containment unit, our multi-jurisdictional tactical team. Lieutenant Colson obtained a Bachelor of Arts degree from Western Illinois University. He will serve as a lieutenant in the Neighborhood Policing Bureau as the division commander of Platoon Three, covering the midnight patrol shift. Lieutenant Colson is here with his wife Erin, their daughter Paisley, and their two sons Lincoln and Wesley, and his mother Julie and stepdad Rick. Mayor, would you come forward and promote Sergeant Colson to the rank of lieutenant?
I, Derek Colson.
I, Derek Colson.
Having been duly appointed to the rank of lieutenant of the police department.
Having been duly appointed to the rank of lieutenant of the police department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct applicable to police administration.
And any, and any Illinois rule of professional conduct applicable to police administration.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the rank of lieutenant of the police department.
Of the rank of lieutenant of the police department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my judgment.
According to the best of my judgment.
And again, as I mentioned, a single gold bar represents the rank lieutenant. It's my honor to promote you to the rank of lieutenant. So I invite his wife Erin to come forward and pin the badge onto you. I'd like to have his family come forward and take a few photos. So I invite Detective Joe Cleaver to come forward with his family. So Detective Joe Cleaver was hired by the Moline Police Department in two thousand and fourteen, and he will be promoted to the rank of sergeant. Since the time he was hired at the Moline Police Department, he's worked in several different assignments with the police department, to include the patrol division, an assignment at South Park Mall within the Community Orienting Policing Unit, detective liaison to both John Deere Middle School and Moline High School, and most recently, as a detective within the juvenile investigations division. While in the juvenile division, he was also instrumental in the partnership with C Y F S and integrating it into the department. Sergeant Cleaver has also served as crisis negotiator with the crisis containment unit and is a member of the department's social media team. Sergeant Cleaver graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Platteville with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Sergeant Cleaver will serve in the Neighborhood Policing Bureau as a supervisor on Platoon Three, covering the midnight patrol shift. Sergeant Cleaver is joined here tonight by his wife Liz, their daughter Charlotte, his dad Gary, his sister Katie, and his wife's parents, Rock and Willow. Also joining him via the council livestream is his mother Nancy and stepfather Jim. So, mayor, if you would, please come forward and promote Detective Cleaver to the rank of sergeant.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joseph Cleaver.
I, Joseph Cleaver.
Having been duly promoted.
Having been duly promoted.
To the rank of sergeant of the police department.
To the rank of sergeant of the police department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct applicable to police administration.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct applicable to police administration.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the rank of sergeant of the police department.
Of the rank of sergeant of the police department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my judgment.
According to the best of my judgment.
So as the, our department, the three chevrons signify the rank of sergeant, so it's my honor to promote you to the rank of sergeant. Congratulations. And if we can have your wife Liz come forward, to have the honor of pinning on his badge. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Me, too. Me, too. Okay, our next item is public comment. I'm not sure if anyone out in the hallway is here for public comment.
KJ, would you mind looking at the public comment signup sheet on the table for me, please? No one? Okay, thank you.
Okay. We do have one that was submitted by email, so, yes, please read now.
So this public comment was submitted by email, as the mayor said, from resident Gerald Shelton. This letter is in regards to the tax levy increase being voted on by council soon. I'm a Moline resident and Alderman Went's ward and have been since two thousand and eight, and I own a local business in Moline as well. I've always thought it was a good idea to have a budget surplus, and previous city councils have as well, as is evidenced by the attempts of previous councils to slice and dice spending as much as possible. One big problem is the way we got to having a budget surplus is a big issue for me, and it should be for other Molineers as well. Previous city administrator Doug Maxsner told the council a few years back that it would be a good idea to increase the tax levy, and that was met with disapproval by the board and the former mayor. I think it was one of the many reasons why he eventually left. Slicing and dicing continued, and the whole narrative of, oh, wow, look, we didn't increase taxes for the past seven years, is what certain members of the board bragged about. That slicing and dicing coupled with improper treatment of city staff by certain members of the council led to the mass exodus of several senior-level city staff, including the city health inspector during the height of the COVID- nineteen lockdowns. Of course, there's going to be an even bigger surplus of money in the city coffers. I mean, look at how much money the city saved by not paying for all those veteran employees. City services were cut and scaled back during the pandemic, and now we are struggling to hire help. It's going to cost more money now to hire help, and it's going to take more bodies to get the services back up to the pre-pandemic levels. No one is thrilled to have, have to pay higher taxes, of course, but the cost-benefit analysis would show that paying a few extra bucks in taxes would get us back to having services that they should be and allow us to maintain this budget surplus. There's also so much more city, the city can do, excuse me, with the completion of the I- seventy-four River Bridge in the not-too-distant future, and maybe finally passenger rail returning to our downtown. Why get bogged down in a disagreement over finances that could have and should have been collecting this entire time? Thank you.
Any questions on the agenda? We move to our agenda items. Number one, Sutphen contract for two fire pumpers.
Mayor and council, before you tonight is a council action report requesting authorization to purchase two custom chassis F-nine fire pumpers utilizing Sourcewell contract in the amount of one million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents from Sutphen Corporation of Dublin, Ohio. The equipment in question has needed to be replaced since two thousand and nine but was deferred by more than a year due to COVID replacement, due to COVID. And the build time for these units is about fifteen to eighteen months, meaning that we probably won't see these units in service until, at the earliest, the end of twenty-two or, at best, early two thousand and twenty-three. We're recommending approval of the purchase, two Sutphen in that dollar amount. And with us tonight, if there are questions, is Sarah Mark, our fleet manager, as well as the fire chief. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Discussion? Mr. O'Brien.
One thing, American-made, of course. Okay.
Dublin, Ohio.
Dublin, Ohio. Okay. Well, you don't, you never know. I guess Dublin is, you know, part of the United States.
For now.
For now. Second thing, I was around when they bought the ladder truck, the big ladder truck, and that was a whole big discussion way back when, and you might remember that, Alderman Waldron. And I know, I don't know if I've noticed it, just because I'm on the council again, we had a lot more uptick in house fires lately. It just seems like I get, like, emails, a lot of emails on house fires in certain parts of town. Is that, that a thing, or has it been, remained constant, or?
So I, I think our numbers are up, and, and part of the equation probably is better communication from us to you folks, and we've tried to do that and make that a point so that you have situational awareness for any of those events, so that might be part of it.
Right.
Our numbers are not out of lack, so to speak, but they are, they are up.
Up a little bit. You think that deals possibly with code enforcement, lack of code enforcement, or these properties that are?
Generally, we, we find human error is the most often factor.
All right, thank you.
You want to?
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion passes. Number two, United Healthcare Policy to Provide an Employer Group Waiver Plan.
Mayor and council, this item and the next several items are coming through the Human Resources Department through the Human Resources Director, asking authorization to execute a policy, in this case with United Healthcare, to provide an emergency group waiver plan for Medicare retirement prescription drug benefit coverage for a period of one year beginning on January twenty-first, January first, two thousand and twenty-two. These, this item is budgeted for fiscal twenty-two. It would be a one-year renewal provided by United Healthcare with a zero percent or no increase to premiums for the twenty-two calendar year. And with us tonight is Leah Miller, our director of Human Resources. Should there be any specific questions? Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Any discussion? Question? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion passes.
That motion passes, thank you. Next item, Navitas Health Solutions Agreement for Pharmacy Benefit Management Services.
Is Navitas?
Navitas.
Navitas, okay. I thought it was Navitas, but that's okay. Anyhow, the mayor and council, before you tonight is another resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Navitas Health, Navitas Health Solutions LLC for pharmacy benefit management services for a two-year period, which will commence on January twenty-one. And this also represents a zero percent increase or no, no change in cost to administration fees over the two-year period. Bottom line, the city has to have a pharmacy benefit management service program for its self-insured plan to process prescription drug claims and pay pharmacy providers. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Discussion? Mr. O'Brien.
I, I read through it, and I wasn't too clear on deductibles. I mean, I know these drug prices can go all over the map, and they, you know, depend, depending on what kind of drug that a person might need to, you know, it might be no out of cost one time, and the next time it will be a hundred and fifty dollars.
Sure, so utilizing this program, they actually help us with pricing and levying improvements, so it is advantageous for our employees, our members' profit.
Okay. Because I know that the, the way the drug companies work, it seems like even, I mean, like, generics have gone pretty high, depending on what the drug is, and sometimes people can get a surprise when they go to the pharmacy, and they think it's covered and it's not, but, but this will, I mean, they'll actually have some recourse there, it sounds like.
Yeah, we, we recommend this plan, and we think that it's the best option.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion passes. Number four, United Healthcare BP Policy for Reinsurance Coverage.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution that would authorize the H R director to execute a policy with United Healthcare BP to provide reinsurance coverage for both medical and prescription drug benefit claims for a period of one year commencing on January one, two thousand and twenty-two, and is budgeted, this one-year renewal that is provided by U H C BP, as an overall increase of two point nine five percent to premiums, which is budgeted in up to a fifteen percent experience refund available to the city during the course of the policy. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Mr. Moyer, are you frozen? You couldn't tell him.
You can tell he's frozen.
Mr. Moyer?
He's saying aye.
Oh, okay.
Alderman O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron? Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion passes. Number five, U M R Inc. Agreement for Administrative Services.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution that would authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with U M R Inc. to provide administrative services for medical and prescription drug benefit claims, and administrative service for dental, vision, and flexible benefit claims for a two-year period commencing on January one, two thousand and twenty-two, and is budgeted accordingly. This two-year renewal provided by U M R would come with a two point three percent increase to medical administration fees in year one, and a three point eight percent increase in year two, with no increase in flexible spending administrative fees in either of those two years. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion passes. Number six, Mission Square Agreement for Retiree Health Insurance Benefits.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution that would authorize both the mayor and city clerk to amend the current agreement that we have with Mission Square Retirement, which was formerly the International City Management Association Retirement Corporation, or I C M A R C, to include changes to retiree health insurance benefits implemented for our AFSME union employees hired on or after January, January one, two thousand and twenty. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion passes. Number seven, P- twenty-five intergovernmental agreement.
Mayor and council, this resolution would authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute an addendum to the intergovernmental agreement for the estimated ten-year ongoing maintenance costs of the integrated P- twenty-five emergency radio tower system in Rock Island County, Illinois, and it would authorize all appropriate city of Moline officers and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities pursuant to the addendum. It would be for a period of ten years. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Any discussion? Hearing none, oh, sorry, got ahead of myself. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion passes. Number eight, Anordinance Levying and Assessing Taxes for the City of Moline, Illinois for the Tax Levy Year Two Thousand and Twenty-One, collectible in the year two thousand and twenty-two, and Enacting Anordinance Relating to the Same Subject Matter.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Went?
Thank you, your honor. In light that we have three point seven seven six million dollars over and above the high end of our policy for fund reserves, and that next year, TIF number one, will be coming back on to the rent roll or to the, the taxing rolls, which should net us somewhere between five hundred and, five hundred and fifty thousand additional dollars, if we're somewhere around the rate we're at right now. I'd like to make a motion that we reduce the levy from this year's amount by five hundred thousand dollars, and to replenish the uh, and to replenish the six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in this year's budget, to come out of, uh, reserves.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Discussion? Mr. Went.
And just for clarification, we're going to reduce the, uh, the levy, uh, what we had this year by five hundred thousand. What was moved and seconded was an increase of about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And so that's where I came up with the six hundred and forty-four thousand dollar, um, replenishment from reserves. This will still leave us with over three million dollars over and above the high end of our reserve policy. I mean, technically, right now, we are not following our own policy as it pertains to reserves. We have a number of, uh, budgeted items throughout, uh, twenty twenty-two, uh, from ARP, uh, and from other funding sources, and we have been told that we do not have the bandwidth to spend any more money in twenty twenty-two. And so by doing this one-year, uh, adjustment, reducing the, uh, the tax levy by half a million dollars, we will then recapture it next year when the, uh, TIF one comes back on, online. And we will give some actual real property tax relief to our residents and make us a much more, competitive community in the area. Uh, it will increase the value of our residents' homes as they are competing to sell or, or, uh, uh, them against, uh, uh, other communities locally. And ultimately, by doing this, it will not reduce one penny of services in twenty twenty-two. We have already been told that we cannot spend anymore, that the, the budget will be fully funded as has been adopted with all the changes that we've made. This is purely coming from a reserve fund, again, that is over and above our reserve fund policy, and still, we're going to end up with an additional three million dollars over and above, uh, what our policy calls for. So that is, uh, the motion, and that's why I'll.
Thank you. Mr. Timian.
Uh, I, I, I understand, uh, I apologize for my voice. I, uh, understand, uh, the math and I also, um, unfortunately Carol's not here, but that when TIF one expires, I asked her specifically if that money is accounted for in the three-year budget that the city staff proposed. And she did say that that money is already allotted for twenty twenty-two and going forward. So to, uh, make a, a change now to the three-year, uh, budget that we ask city staff to, to do would be a slap in the face to the work that they've done. So for that, I will vote against the amendment.
Mr. Went.
Point of inquiry, uh, I, I just want to make sure you're clear on what you said. You said that it had the TIF funds were, were budgeted for twenty twenty-two?
The, the expiration of the, the, the TIF money, the, the five hundred thousand has already been accounted for in the following years.
In twenty twenty-three and beyond, not in twenty twenty-two.
Sure.
But it, it.
As I understand.
We have to be very clear because that, that is why I am and, and others are supporting this is because we have a unique situation in twenty twenty-two in which we are running such, we have such high reserves and the following year, when we do budget for twenty twenty-three, that we can then go back and look at the levy and increase it to match those. But this year, we do not need the funds, we don't have the ability to spend the funds, and all we're doing is we're pulling it out of the pockets of our residents to sit in our reserve fund ultimately.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I think we need to take a closer look, not just at property taxes, but how we're assessing our taxes and pushing that across to the whole city. And I think a time to do that is when we have that influx of money that is coming. I do understand we have a reserve, but, um, I think that we have what in place that will allow us to work on some of the big projects we discussed at our last meeting and push those things forward. Um, I also have a lot of worry of looking just at the property tax and ignoring what we look at other ways. Um, property taxes, to cut that, is a regressive property tax that benefits not the average homeowner, but the big homeowners and the big property owners more than it benefits those who just have a single-family home. And so I am generally opposed to looking at that as the best way to give back to the people of Moline. So I think that what we need is working towards stability and working toward having a predictable tax rate. And while I think we need to talk about lowering that for next year, I really am committed to having a closer look at that. I think we need to stay where we are at the same rate we used for the year prior, uh, for now.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Macias?
Yeah, and I just want to say, we don't know what opportunities might arise, um, here in the next, uh, year or two. I, I just, I, I'm not opposed to lowering it, it's just not right now. There, there will be a time that, um, I, I would be open to having those discussions. Uh, we still have a lot of staff that we have to hire and, um, and yeah, there's going to be costs that are going up just everywhere. So, uh, I, I just, I just think it's about timing for me.
Just a minute, Mr. Went. I, I will come to you. Just a reminder, two, two, uh, points per question. Mr. Ficas, would you mind sharing what you have, uh, expressed on professional, um, practice in some other cities with regard to reserve amounts, that, that where we land with our policy compared to other cities?
Well, I, I think the bottom line is, is that you have a reserve policy that I don't know when it was actually created. It's been on the books for a while, I would assume.
No, it was, it was adopted.
Please don't interrupt. Thank you.
I'm, I'm answering his question. It was, uh, adopted in twenty twenty.
Thank you for not interrupting.
Just giving information.
So we have, we have a policy that has a range in it of twenty to twenty-five percent, which, you know, which is not uncommon in, in other local governments. Sometimes it's specific, sometimes it's not. You know, as a general rule, the auditors like to see no less than three months in reserve for operations and sometimes they like to see six. Six is preferred. In other places that I have worked in years past, uh, and it varies from state to state and depends upon, you know, cataclysmic events or catastrophic events that could happen. Sometimes auditors like to see six months in reserve and they would love to see twelve. And, and I've had organizations where we have twelve months almost in reserve. So I, I think the, the first thing you have to ask yourself is, you know, is the reserve level, uh, that's being, that it's set at today, the twenty to twenty-five percent, is that being driven by audit recommendations? And if so, great. If not, then I think that's one of the first discussions you need to have. The other thing that you run into then is, is, you know, you have, uh, a reserve that is in excess today, and as Alderman Went has pointed out, by three point seven seven six million dollars above your twenty-five percent threshold, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, what to do with those dollars? Whether you return those dollars in the, in the form of tax relief or whether you use those dollars to fund capital improvements, which you are doing, which is a very common practice. It's a very common practice, say, look, we have this capital improvement program, we don't, we never have enough money to fund it, so let's take our reserves and let's apply it against our capital investments. Infrastructure in this city being the number one request across the boards. So as you look forward to next year and the year after, because remember, the budget is a rolling document, it's a fluid document, and, and proof is in the pudding, you've amended it several times in the short time I've been here. So that being said, you have the opportunity to always go back and make whatever adjustments you need to, but I think they need to be fully informed. I think that you have a multitude of issues here, not just property taxes. You have the, 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 the rate studies that need to be done for our utilities, and those need to be examined. So when you look at the picture, what is the actual impact on a single-family home or a commercial property or an industrial property? All of those things factor in, and on their side of the table, that's how they look at it. You as homeowners do the same thing. So I, I think, you know, the levy that's in front of you tonight that was recommended by staff is not here. This is the levy that was actually adjusted by council as a part of our deliberations. And not knowing what the final EAB will be spread across all properties, subject to the appeals that are going to take place, we won't know until April. And in April, you'll, or may, you'll have a better idea of how this actually shook out. There is a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, let's just make sure I want him to speak. So the actual property taxes increase is a hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars spread across all properties that are taxable in the city. And, and our EAB did go up one point one five percent. So that was your growth for a given year, and that is predominantly residential investments that took place in people's personal properties with two single-family homes being built, for the record. There was some commercial growth, there was literally limited growth whatsoever in industrial site, understandably. Uh, your property tax increase is point nine three percent based upon the hundred and forty-seven, five hundred and twenty, twenty-one dollars. So you're looking at fifteen million, eight oh six, three twenty-one in terms of property tax. And at point nine three percent, that's fifteen million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars, which is what is in the resolution this evening. The levy rate, the multiplier, I like to call it a multiplier because that's really what it is, your levy rate, today was two point zero one seven seven zero, and by council direction, we lowered it to two point zero one three four three. The impact on a hundred thousand dollar residential home today is eight dollars. The impact on a half a million dollar commercial property is sixteen dollars, and those are the figures that were reported by Carol. So when you're looking, when you're looking at, at this decision, you know, the council is free to do what the council would like to do, obviously.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Waldron.
Thank you, your honor. I just want to remind everybody, fellow council members, when we sat down at that budget session, we looked at, uh, two or three thousand properties or how many properties that Carol presented to us, every single one of them was. Keep that in mind, every single one of them was going up. We're sitting on reserves over and above whatever our threshold is. We typically in this city, for my entire career here, try to stay in and around ninety days. That was the sweet point we had, even before we had a policy. We, according to Carol, will be at a hundred and forty-five days. Remember, you're going to need to talk to your constituents, look them in the eye and say, boy, you really must have needed this, uh, tax levy increase to, to do your operations. Alderman Went is correct. Fiscal year twenty twenty-two is funded. Every bit of service is there. We don't need these reserves to do that. We don't need the reserves to do capital improvement. I think we're all pretty much aware, our capital improvement program for twenty twenty-two is extremely aggressive and we'll be lucky to get it done. We didn't get twenty twenty-one done. We have many streets out there that are still, that were budgeted that didn't get done. Think about that. The other thing I always cringe, and it makes me cringe, and I just got to say it one last ti, last time. We don't set a rate, we will never set a rate. You can talk about setting a rate, lowering a number, raising a number, we don't do it. The only action that we have is the levy. We set a levy, we tell the county what the levy is, they determine the rate, and then they determine the rate when there's appeals. We're not setting a rate, we've never set a rate, we set a levy. And we're asking for a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars more when we're sitting on a three point seven one one reserve, whatever it is. Take the budget yearly. Yes, we asked staff to budget for three years. Yes, they did an excellent job. Remember also what Carol told us. She was extremely conservative in, uh, revenue projections, extremely conservative. So take the levy out of it, but think about sales tax, think about everything else. All those numbers are conservative. They may well come in even higher than what she's projected, and I think if you asked her directly, she would say, I hope they're going to come in higher. But the last year even during COVID shows you that they did. So that extra money there will be going into reserve. So the reserves will be even higher when we get to the end of FY twenty twenty-two. I encourage you to lower the levy. Thank you, your honor.
Mr. Went.
Thank you. You, you knocked off a number of points that I had here, uh, Alderman Waldron. Uh, just for some clarification, uh, the policy that we adopted was written by Carol and we adopted thirteen months ago. It is as current as you're going to get. And we put it upon staff, that's what she wrote, as Alderman Waldron said. Uh, ninety days has been the, the spot that we have been, um, shooting for. There has been years when we've been at eighty-seven or eighty-nine, and we certainly are looking at a hundred and forty-one days is irresponsible. We passed this policy thirteen months ago to be at, uh, twenty-five percent. We are now at three point seven seven six million dollars over the top end of that, and we're just hoarding this money. To Alderman Waldron's point, we are spending seventeen million on CIP. That's the most I've seen, and maybe the most he's ever seen since he's been, uh, here, and Alderman Waldron's been here for a long time. And he is absolutely right. Over the last five years, there's been about ten million dollars of projects that we budgeted that have gotten pushed to the following year. We don't have the bandwidth, even if we wanted to take that and spend it on roads right now, we do not have the ability. So that is, maybe in twenty twenty-three, that might be the case, or twenty twenty-four, but it is not the case now. So to try to communicate to the public that like, oh, if we keep this, we're going to do more roads, that is not true. We, we, we talked about it last week and the, the comment was, we do not have the bandwidth for it. Uh, to the comment that said that, uh, we need to give them a predictable tax rate, we need to give them a predictable high tax rate, one that is higher, save Rock Island, East Moline and Galesburg, is higher than any other comparable, uh, community in the state of Illinois by a lot. You know, normal is at one point oh three or oh five, and we're over two. Those are the only communities that are over two in the state of Illinois. And the argument that says we should be predictable and be above two when all the other comparable cities are under two, again, I think is, is, uh, is irresponsible. We owe it to our residents in this unique year in which we have so much surplus to then turn around to them and say, but we're going to take more money out of your pockets. A hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars more out of your pockets. And what are we going to do with it? We're going to just stick it in the pot. And so with that, that is why I would like to reduce for this year the levy by five hundred thousand dollars below what it was last year. Backfill that with the reserves, we're still going to wind up with somewhere around three point one million dollars of excess reserves. So if something does come up or we have some kind of emergency, not only do we have our full twenty-five percent, but an additional three point one million dollars sitting there as, uh.
And a contingency fund.
Wait, please, you need to follow our rules.
And, and, and I appreciate that. We have also budgeted a contingency into this. So if little things come up, that can take care of that. So I, I think that it is, uh, very important for our residents to know what is going on, and I think you guys need to support this decrease because that is what is in the best interest of our residents right now. I completely agree with you. We need to look at, uh, uh, those other, uh, tax rates. And as you will find out, being in, in, in this position as we go through the budgeting, the levy is the, the one, um, throttle that we have real control over. When you're talking about property tax, because every year we have to set a levy, every single year. So that is changed from year to year and, and we can throttle it up and throttle it down depending on what the situation is. The other taxes that you're talking about, dropping something a cent or even a quarter of a cent could be hundreds of thousands of dollars differences or depending on what the tax is. And then if you wanted to change it, then you have to adopt a whole nother thing to change it again, and depending on what the situation is, you may have to have a referendum, a, and so the levy is the place where you have that throttle that you can do that. And we are in an absolutely unique situation. Our residents have gone through the last two years of COVID and we all see what's happening with gas prices and inflation right now. And for you guys to pile on by increasing the levy, that is the wrong policy to do at this time.
Carol, I have a question for you. Carol, I have a question for you. Uh, did you, you heard the motion, correct?
Yes, I did.
Yes, and, uh, or the amendment to the motion, thank you. Um, can you weigh in on the conversation that was at the beginning? Uh, I'm not sure if you heard between Mr. Timian and Mr. Went about where those dollars were allotted over the three-year budget from coming off the T I F.
Regarding the five hundred thousand, dropping off T I F one, um, yes, in our three-year budget as proposed, those, um, tax dollars are built into the two thousand and twenty-three budget.
Okay, thank you. Um, my other question is, um, as we, as was mentioned, the final rates come from, come to us in April, correct? And we are always at liberty to make amendments to our budget, correct?
Yes.
So it is quite possible to understand where Mr. Went is coming from, but pass what we know will fund things and then change things down the road. Is that correct? Or no?
We are always, you can always amend your budget, yes.
But not your levy.
But not your levy.
Not your levy.
Thank you, thank you. That's, I needed that clarity. So I did want to then just point out, um, last week we were presented with a list of projects for discussion, um, some of which are currently in discussion and, you know, as we heard in the P M T meeting this afternoon, trying to move things forward because in a sense they are low-hanging fruit, such as the skate park, pump track, um, and some other parks. So, um, there are millions and millions of dollars of future and deferred projects that we have to talk about, and some of which we're moving on already into twenty twenty-two. So it is quite possible that that three point, was it seven, three point one, uh, million reserve above our, above our, um, limit could be used in part at least...
Point of inquiry.
In twenty twenty-two.
Point of inquiry.
Yes, sir.
Uh, can you, uh, refresh, uh, our memory that one point five million from ARP funds have already been allocated towards the skate park, isn't that correct?
That's not in the list we were provided from the councilman last week. I'm sorry, do you have a chance to look that up, Carol?
We we've already voted on that and, uh, applied, so it would not come out of the three million dollar, uh, reserves.
This for the skate park?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, hang on, just one second, maybe I can help. Okay.
However, to the other point, there are projects that we are trying to move forward and gather all the beginning stages of, such as the Great River Park, four point seven estimated million. These are funds, these are projects that some of these funds we're talking about can go toward, especially in the beginning stages. This, so I don't, while I hear what you're saying, and I hear about capacity for capital improvement projects, there are other things that we have talked about and we are very close to deeper discussions on that some of these, um, funds will be going toward and that have been identified as, uh, major projects for this council. One second, please.
It's just a simple question. Can you name anything that would happen in twenty-two that's...
Well, I don't have a crystal ball, but there, we have to work with staff on these projects that have been identified.
The examples you gave have already been budgeted in the ARP funds. We have the money for them.
No, then why, then we wouldn't have had the discussion last week on topics that are still to come, that haven't been budgeted for in these, in this cycle.
And our city administrator specifically said, and he, and you did not want to actually go through them line by line because you wanted to talk about them in a, that you wanted to talk about them in a, uh, a session after the first of the year, and because, uh, um, uh, Bob had indicated, we do not have the bandwidth to do that in twenty twenty-two. So having those conversations and work sessions in twenty twenty-two so we can do them in twenty twenty-three was the reason that we put that off. And so I I understand what you're saying, but we've been specifically told, we do not have the bandwidth to do any more of those in twenty twenty-two. I don't disagree with you. There may be some engineering or looking into the things, but we've got three point one, if we pass this, we still have three point one million over our reserves for those little engineering things to prepare for the things that would happen in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. O'Brien.
So you're saying you want to do this for this fiscal year?
This fiscal year.
Um, and how, how much is this, uh, did we say overall we're getting out of this total of of above what we normally give?
Hundred forty-seven.
At the last, at the last meeting of council, the number, the number that was directed was...
I thought you said one forty-four.
One hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. And I would just ask Carol to answer your question, I'm not seeing specifically the the pump track and the skate park in the ARP allocation. And maybe I'm just not seeing it, but I've I've looked at this twice now.
I'm, Mr. Griffith, I hate to call on you without preparation, but...
I don't see it.
Mine weighing in.
Not twenty-two.
Your Honor. My recollection is that we put one point five million towards I seventy, things under I seventy-four.
That's proper.
We put two, two million dollars for I seventy-four acquisition.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I agree with Alderman Went that the skate park or the pump track specifically pointed out. I think we just put a general amount of money.
Did you want, yes.
Yeah, it was, it was two million, you're right, it was two million.
I would echo that.
Yeah, it was two million.
Any further comments?
Well, I, I guess I wasn't done. We're, we're fighting over a fairly, not a large amount of money with with the the big city budget, but it does reflect on people's personal budgets. And I have no interest in inflicting any more hardship than that has already been inflicted, believe me. Um, if this is a one-year thing, um, I guess, I guess I, I can't find any fault in what you're presenting us here tonight, but we have to fund these projects.
Absolutely.
Because these are projects that people can see. These are physical things that, you know, the money goes to federal government, we don't get anything back. State government, eh, we might get something back. But, you know, people are paying a lot now at the pump. Gas prices are out of control, nothing's being done about that. We got a medical plan presented to us, it was like reading an encyclopedia Britannica. I mean, we, I guess we'll take their word for it, they're going to like, uh, pay these, uh, pre, you know, when the bill comes, they're going to pay it. Uh, but that hasn't been my experience, and I supposedly have good health insurance. So people are basically on their own for health insurance, uh, you're not getting any help with gas prices, and thank you very much, we're, we're gonna, uh, you know, it doesn't sound like much on paper. And, uh, boy, I just, and I, I, I've supported this all along, but I don't, I don't really have a stomach for inflicting any more hardship on the people of Moline that they've already gone through. So I guess you know how I'm going to vote now.
Can you please restate your motion, Mr. Went?
Well, and, and...
For your amendments.
And and for the clarification, I thought it was one forty-four, so I will change that to the one forty-seven because I think that that was the intent. So, um, the motion was to reduce this coming year's tax levy to be five hundred thousand dollars below, um, was next year's tax levy to be five hundred thousand dollars below this year's tax levy. And the six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, uh, to be replenished, uh, out of the excess reserves.
Okay. Uh, thank you for all your diligent work just to do that out.
I can't always read my own handwriting.
Any, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Nay.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Nay.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Five ayes, three nays?
All right, that amended, amendment passes. Um, please refresh my memory, we need to, it's all done, yep.
No, we need to...
No, not the amended motion.
No, we need to go back.
Yeah, we need to have a roll call vote on the amended motion.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I just...
Roll call.
Right, that's what I was thinking. Roll call on the amended motion.
Thank you. Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
All right, that motion passes. Um, number nine. Yep, thank you, I just had to switch my paper. Uh, number nine, S S A number five, special ad valorem tax.
Mayor Council before you is the ordinance that would levy a special ad valorem tax within the city of Moline, Illinois for special service area number five for twenty fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-one, collectible in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Um, the amount requested in S S A number five levy ordinance totals six thousand dollars, but will generate a hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars through the T I F. City, uh, as a result of that, transfers a hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars to the T I F into S S A number five to fulfill their twenty-two, fiscal twenty-two, uh, budget request.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion passes. S S A number six, special ad valorem tax.
Mayor Council, similar to S S A number five, this ordinance would levy a special ad valorem tax within the city of Moline for special service area number six. Uh, for tax, uh, as a result, for tax levy year twenty-one, the amount requested for the S S A number six levy ordinance totals five, fifty-five thousand eight hundred dollars, which would in turn generate two hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty, fifty-five dollars through the T I F. City transfers two sixty-nine, two hundred and fifty-five from the T I F to S S A six to fulfill their twenty twenty-two operating budget.
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you, motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion passes. S S A number six, special ad valorem tax.
Mayor Council, similar to S S A number five, this ordinance would levy a special ad valorem tax within the city of Moline for special service area number six. Uh, for tax, uh, as a result, for tax levy year twenty-one, the amount requested for the S S A number six levy ordinance totals five, fifty-five thousand eight hundred dollars, which would in turn generate two hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty, fifty-five dollars through the T I F. City transfers two sixty-nine, two hundred and fifty-five from the T I F to S S A six to fulfill their twenty twenty-two operating budget.
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you, motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, request approval of committee of the whole in council meeting minutes of November second, twenty twenty-one, and appointments made during committee of the whole on November ninth, twenty twenty-one. Council Bill twelve, ten, dash, twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing approval of change order number one and final with Fisher Escavator Incorporated for project number thirteen fifty-four, twenty twenty-one lead water service replacements for the amount of six thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and four cents. Council Bill twelve, eleven, dash, twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing approval of change order number one and final with Walter D. Lott Incorporated for project number thirteen forty-five, forty-ninth Street North of Twelfth Avenue for the amount of twenty-six thousand seventeen dollars and thirty-three cents. Council Bill twelve, twelve, dash, twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing approval of change order number one and final with five cities construction company for project number thirteen fifty-nine, retaining wall removal on Fifty-third Street at Jane Addams School for the amount of two thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars. Council Bill twelve, thirteen, dash, twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing approval of change order number one and final with Walter D. Lott Incorporated for motor, motor fuel tax, M F T section twenty-one, dash, zero zero two eight zero, zero zero R P, Eleventh Avenue C, Fifty-second Street Court to Fifty-fourth Street for the amount of fifty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Council Bill twelve, fourteen, dash, twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing approval of change order number one and final with five cities construction company for project number thirteen fifty, Sixth Street Reconstruction, Fourth Avenue to Railroad Avenue for the amount of one, I'm sorry, fourteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-five cents. Council Bill twelve, fifteen, dash, twenty twenty-one, a resolution amending budget resolution number eleven forty-eight, dash, twenty twenty, by authorizing various changes to line items in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget and authorizing the finances, finance director to do all things necessary to complete said changes. Council Bill twelve, sixteen, dash, twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Economy Roofing Company for the Riverside Mausoleum Roof for the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred dollars and ratifying all prior, ratifying all prior actions of the mayor, city clerk, and parks and recreation director in executing the contract due to exigency of circumstance.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays? And that motion passes. Non-consent agenda, second reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty twenty-seven, dash, twenty twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the city of Moline, Illinois for pension funding purposes.
Move to approve, uh, Bill thirty twenty-seven, dash, twenty twenty-one?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Mayor Raif Haddi?
Aye.
Nine ayes, no nays? And that motion passes. Council Bill thirty twenty-eight, dash, twenty twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation corporate purpose bonds for the city of Moline, Illinois for financing the improvement of Riverside Park.
Move to approve thirty twenty-eight, dash, twenty twenty-one?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Macias. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Mayor Raif Haddi?
Aye.
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Mayor Raif Haddi?
Aye.
Nine ayes, no nays? And that motion passes. First reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty thirty-one, dash, twenty twenty-one, as amended, an ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the city of Moline, Illinois, for the tax levy year twenty twenty-one, collectible in year twenty twenty-two, enacting an ordinance relating to the same subject matter. Council Bill thirty thirty-two, dash, twenty twenty-one, an ordinance levying a special ad valorem tax in the city of Moline, Illinois, special service area number five, of the city of Moline, Illinois. Council Bill thirty-three, three, dash, twenty twenty-one, an ordinance levying a special ad valorem tax within the city of Moline, Illinois, special service area number six of the city of Moline, Illinois. And that is all I have this evening, your honor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Williams, miscellaneous business.
Uh, just a really, uh, thank you to all veterans for this Thursday's, uh, Veterans Day. Especially to you, Aldery Waldron. And, um, a very happy birthday to, uh, all U.S. Marines, as tomorrow, November tenth, is their birthday.
Thank you.
Dear Marines.
Mr. Macias?
Nothing, your honor.
You, Mr. Went?
I just want to thank everybody, I mean, I, I know sometimes we land on different sides of, uh, um, uh, different debate things, but I think that it is important for our residents to hear us to move in, in all sides, and I think coming out of it, we'll have some ideas on, on other things we can do in the future to, uh, uh, to shine the apple a little better and, uh, uh, move our, uh, our city forward in the right direction. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Timian.
Nothing, your honor.
Mr. O'Brien?
Nothing, your honor.
Mr. Waldron? Oh, sorry, Mr. Moyer, online. You were muted. You got anything?
I'm sorry, nothing, your honor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Waldron.
Yes, your honor, I want to, uh, wish a very, very happy birthday to our HR Director, hardworking, uh, young lady, and I very much appreciate all your efforts that you do, Leah. Happy birthday.
Nothing, your honor.
Alright, I, I would echo, uh, also the thank you for the last several weeks of debate. Um, I also want to compliment this, uh, group on, um, working to come to a compromise from a variety of angles. And, and I have mentioned publicly, I think that there's not enough of that kind of work, and if we can set an example to other public bodies, that it's possible to disagree, but come to a place, uh, an eight-zero vote is a very strong message to our community, and I appreciate the work you all had to do, um, to get there, so thank you very much. I, we can still work on our decorum. Oh, we're getting there. Mr. Vitas.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Just a quick update, um, in terms of the broadband project. Uh, we have reached out to a, an Illinois-based consultant, uh, a few weeks back, following a council meeting, and, uh, based on my discussions with this, uh, with this company, this particular gentleman, along with Adam Simon from Ansel Inc., Link, uh, we gave him a week, became two weeks, in order to respond to us in terms of whether or not his schedule would allow for his ability to perform this project. Uh, unfortunately, he is unable to do this project, and he's so advised at the end of the week last week. I believe it was the end of the week. Uh, keep in mind, Macy's been gone now for a little over a week, and it's coming up on two weeks, like, at the end of the week, so. Um, that being said, we went ahead and, uh, he did have recommendations in terms of other consultants in the field, who are experts in the telecommunications field, especially regarding broadband for local governments. Um, I did reach out to one of those two companies. Uh, we did make arrangements to meet and have a discussion, but the principal at that firm actually took ill that morning and was not available. So I'm in the process of rescheduling this meeting with a company called CTC. It's an East Coast-based company. Uh, they came highly, highly recommended by, uh, Mr. Chapman, who was the other consultant here in Schaumburg, Illinois. And, uh, they were also recommended by the, uh, the folks in, I believe it was, I want to say Lexington, Kentucky, who used their services, um, to do a broadband project. So, so where we're at right now, uh, I had a follow-up discussion with, with Margaret, uh, late last week, I think it was Thursday, about moving this project forward, and I, and I have some concerns, and I'm going to share them with you because I think they're valid and irrelevant to, to where we're going to go. You know, and looking back at, at the entire process, going back to last year, uh, I think it was December of, of twenty, going into January, February of, of the current year. You know, it, it came, it just, it came to me at, at one moment to really go back, based upon, uh, my discussion with Margaret, and take a hard look at that RFP, I mean, a real hard look. And then I, I, as I looked at that, based on conversations I had had with Mr. Chapman, in terms of moving this project forward, um, there was some concern about the whole process. So I, I looked at the bids, and as I looked at the bids, it came, it became abundantly clear that, uh, that one of the vendors had submitted their proposal post-deadline. A day late, and a dollar short, but a day late. Should have been returned, it was not. So, I took a look at the other two proposals that we received, and came to the conclusion that they did not meet all of the criteria required in the bid. And yet, there were discussions with one of the two of them. So, based on my discussions and deliberations with legal counsel, it became the conclusion that those bids should have been all rejected. Should have been rejected, the letter should have gone out. So, very interesting. So we decided we were going to send a letter to all of them, after we spoke with counsel, advising them that all, all the bids, even though they were only valid for ninety days, we should be on public record, basically rejecting those bids. Even at this late time, we should reject those bids. Which then comes to the next step in the process, bringing on a consultant, you know. After a very lengthy discussion with Mr. Chapman, you know, and the questions arose, it became clear that nobody ever really did a full-blown assessment, or at least an assessment, of what the actual needs would be in the community, given our, our current level of service that we have, uh, with MediaCom, the current level of service that, uh, Geneseal Communications provides to certain parts of this community. And then there's the remaining balance that's unserved by any type of a broadband. So we have partial broadband, and we have cable, internet, cable phone, cable served video. So, it's a complex question, is if we're going to spend money, whether it's the million dollars that in ARC dollars we allocated, or a fraction thereof, or a slightly higher amount, I, as the administrator, need to be comfortable making a recommendation to this council that these numbers are accurate, that they have a factual basis, and it's just not some number guessed at arbitrarily or otherwise, to say, what would it cost to serve all property owners? So no homes are left unserved, meaning the underserved population also gets served, which was a concern of not only the previous council, it's a concern of this council. So, in looking at this project, in looking at, at the discussions, upcoming discussions with CTC, I think it's important that, that we step back. Yeah, I don't want to rush this, I don't want to, I don't want to delay it, but I don't want to rush this as it was, and, and come back with something that's even, you know, as, as, not as valid as it needs to be in terms of serving this citizens, and using tax dollars to pay for it, whether they're federal tax dollars, state tax dollars, or local generated tax dollars. The assessment needs to be done, somebody needs to evaluate the needs in this community and clearly identify what it would take to provide that level of service the citizens deserve or that they want, uh, and what level of service that is. The second step in that process is, is once that's done, is to have the consultant then work with us to prepare an actual RFP to address the identified needs. And then once those identified needs are properly identified in a public RFP, to release that RFP, and to have that consultant then in turn evaluate these proposals as they're submitted, and come back to this council with a professional recommendation on how to proceed going forward and to award a contract. The advantage we have is that it's almost winter time. This is not the time to be starting a underground project, even though it doesn't sound that bad, it's not that great. And, uh, in the spring, we would actually be, prior to the spring, we could award this contract, and in the spring, we could launch this project, and effectively, cost-effectively produce the results, I think, that the citizens need or want, and the council would prefer to deliver to them within the finances that are available, or made available to them, whether it's the million, a lesser number, or a, or a greater number. That, I'm not going to sit there and tell you, I, I, I can't give you that number, don't have it. So, that's where the project is at. I know there was twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, allocated or set aside, I, I don't have a firm number at this point. That is the scope of work. It would be to do the analysis, to prepare the RFP, to review the RFP and make professional recommendations, consulting recommendations back to council. You know, and, and to do so probably within, within a three-month, maybe maximum four-month period, depending on how quickly they could get the job done. So that's kind of the heads up as to where that project ended up. Any questions, anybody?
Mr. Waldron?
Lots of questions. No, I have a question, but just something for my fellow council members to, to remember. We've been talking about this for at least two, two and a half years, when we got another, uh, bid from another vendor, MetroNet. And MetroNet is serving, uh, Davenport, Bettendorf, Rock Island, East Moline. Molineers are sitting out there alone, with no other option right now, other than MediaCom. And I know you get emails and phone calls, just like I do. And I would like you, I realize I brought this up before, and I realize it wouldn't amount to some areas in the city not being served, but I really believe that we should contemplate going ahead with MetroNet, so we provide something for our citizens as an alternative to what they have right now, which is only MediaCom. I realize they're not going to serve, uh, every area, Alderman Williams has already come up in his chair. I know that, I'm just asking you to consider all Molineers and give them a chance, it's in competition. Go ahead, Scott.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Mike, I appreciate that, but by doing that, I lock out the complete first ward, include myself. They're not going to provide that. MetroNet said they wouldn't. And what it also does, that it, it locks them out in the future, because there's no financial incentive for them to do that. So by making the quick knee-jerk reaction just to provide a little to some, I, I, I doomed the whole first ward to never having it, for a long, long time. So I just, I, I'd be patient, do it right the first time, and I, I understand the need, because I get the same phone calls everyone else does, but, uh, I don't think we knee-jerk and, and clutch now and, and throw the bomb, we just stay with the game plan.
Um, hang on one second. I, I do believe, when we talked about this a few weeks, months ago, and we said, go ahead and look for a consultant, you all saw at the time what that one million dollars would get us. And that was coverage everywhere, was it not?
Yes.
So I don't, I don't believe we're talking about that situation anymore. It's an updated option, but the council wanted to know we were going to get what we needed, and that's why we are at where we're at. So I, I, I don't think it's the same conversation that we had, you had a while ago. Yes, sir.
I understand that. But if we approved it tonight, we are eighteen months to two years away from seeing fiber hit anywhere in this city. I'm saying there's an alternative route out there right now that could help out some of our citizens. I realize we have a plan going forward, but we are a long way from getting a fiber underground.
Mr. Timian?
Uh, just, Bob, just so I understand, based on your explanation, if we were to go forward with MetroNet, because the, the bids were not correctly submitted or late, are we then open to liability from someone else? And so, I mean, what you're describing is we're trying to avoid that. And I, I think we're probably going to end up in this MetroNet situation, based on just word on the street. But if we don't, we don't, but doing it correctly is really the desire.
Miss, that is correct. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but either earlier this year or late last year, there were negotiations with MetroNet, and they walked away.
I had the opposite opinion, I thought we walked away because they wouldn't cover the entire city.
Correct. Um, Mr. Went?
I can answer that.
Oh.
Yes, Mr. Vitas.
Or Mr. Went, I wasn't here, you could answer that. I know what the file says.
Yeah, so, so, well, well, why don't you talk about the file, and then I'll give my opinion afterwards.
Yeah, there were, there were negotiations, and there were, really, there were two issues. It was, it was the, the question of service area, and who would be served and who would not. And then there was a question of buried versus aerial, and additional poles. And, and that's exactly what those whole discussions evolved around. And at, at, at some point certain, those discussions, like other discussions, stopped, and then discussions started with another provider, uh, that had bid, and you know, not having been here, it's hard to speak to exactly what transpired. But, you know, I'm going to go along, I'm going to stick to my guns on this. I, I, I feel bad, Mike, about, about the citizens here, I really do, but I've had lengthy conversations even with MetroNet, and, um, and they're definitely going to be back at the table, they want this contract, they want this franchise agreement. That's really what it is, it's a non-exclusive franchise, franchise agreement, they want it. And, and I think they all need to sharpen their pencils, I think they all need to come back here. I mean, the build-out that they were talking about, you know, doing the city in four different quadrants, um, I'm not sure which, who goes first, okay, that's always going to be a battle, who goes first. Uh, but I believe that the four quadrants overlap wards, so that's a good thing, the way they divided the city. But, you know, you were talking about a twelve-month build-out too. So had we been able to, had everything, everything been clean, and we had retained them in October to do the project, you know, they were committed to get it done by December of next year. So what we're doing, we're delaying that installation cycle by, by three months, is what we're doing.
Anything else?
Yeah, just, I think Alderman Timian's point's well taken, the, the liability clearly is a, is, is a big issue. And our biggest leverage is person number two coming to, because number three, the economics of it start to fall apart in today's world, when it comes, when it comes to a third vendor and a fourth vendor. The second vendor coming in, they have the opportunity to get market share, so it makes sense. And so, to Alderman Williams' point, this is the time we have to get it right. And we, we are, we're far enough down this road that, um, I, I think, uh, trusting Bob, trusting the consultant, um, getting somebody who knows what they're talking about, because I don't think any of us have anywhere near the expertise to, to determine if this vendor, or that vendor, or this approach is the right one. Um, I, I really think the residents of Moline will, while it may take a little bit longer, will end up light years ahead, uh, when you use a consultant.
Mr. O'Brien?
So a little history lesson for my benefit. What, it was like most of the first ward wasn't going to be covered, probably part of the second ward, right? That, that's, uh.
Some third, some third ward.
It's, it's sixth ward, maybe? Or was that?
It was a park down by the river, that one.
Park down by the river?
Yes.
And did you say what the build-out would be, even if we get everything going, it's going to be basically close to two years?
That, that was.
No, no, the indication, uh, there's two parts to, to that, Alderman O'Brien. The proposals that, that did show up, uh, and there were really only two who ever had conversations with the previous administration. And the issue of coverage was always one of the problems. One of the things that, that I know in discussions that I had, after the, you know, middle of June going forward, uh, actually in July and August, uh, would have included the entire city. I mean, they were told, it's, it's either the whole city, or none of the city. You don't have a choice, you have to provide services to all properties in the city. The only exception to that would be, we have to decide, will they be required to provide additional service to those who are already served by fiber service in the city? You know, and, and that's like having AT&T have a fiber line, and then having Xfinity running a fiber line. And if you live in other places like I have, you have that situation, where you can choose one or the other, depending upon, you know, who's making you the happiest at that moment, because nobody's ever happy with these carriers. Um, the other, the other issue then is timing. And, you know, in, in both cases, in talking to both of those, those two vendors, and they will both be back at the table, I'm sure you. Um, you know, you were talking about a twelve-month period, you know, if they were able to begin the project and finish it. It's ba- basically one quarter per quadrant, is what it was.
Okay. Well, I could tell you.
I'm hoping it's only twelve months.
I, I've shared, uh, Alderman Waldron, I get a lot of calls on that. I mean, that's probably the number one call, and I'm sure first ward, second ward's, places that aren't covered very well, you're getting a lot of calls on that.
Yeah.
But we need to do it right.
But to give you an example, I mean, in Rock Island, if you look, and, you know, in the city of Rock Island, um, where MetroNet actually has been running their, their fiber lines, there are large swaths of that city that are not covered under their franchise agreement.
Yeah.
And I've read their franchise.
Let you guess where it's at.
Yeah, and I've read their franchise agreement, and you can see on the map that these are areas that have been carved out by the provider. And the city did not insist that they were served. You go to East Moline on our other border, and you can see that they've done a much, I don't want to say a much greater job, but they've got a broader cover, coverage area. And in both cases, they, and in both cases, they paid zero for the services that were being provided, they paid zero. In the case of Rock Island, it's going to be a zero, that's where they're, I'm not hearing that there was any negotiations to change the original franchise agreement. In East Moline, they are going to add areas that are probably underserved, and for those areas, they will pay, based on negotiations, which I'm not privy to, but I know are ongoing. So, you know, there's no right one-size-fits-all here. You know, other than we would like as a city to have all property owners have broadband service available to them. And then you get into the technical questions, you know, do you? need a gig? How many people know if they need a gig? You might need 250. You might need 500. Depends on how you use your system, and the system needs to be scalable so that as technologies change, you have to be able, your, your vendor has to be able to grow this system, because fiber has no limitation except for the equipment on both ends. That information will move between two pieces of equipment as fast as you want it to, but the equipment dictates the speeds. So, it's technical, and that's the reason for bringing in experts who, who know much more about it than probably any of us in the room to do it right.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Um, I had always had concerns about how that RFP process had worked, and I had shared those with you, and you said, "We'll figure that out when we review it," which we have, so I'm feeling...
Hope you're feeling better.
I feel much better, and, um, my biggest concern had always been that the proposals had come in from different sets of information, and some were more negotiated somewhere in RFP, whereas I thought that all had to be one. My question is, though, are we required to go through an RFP process, or can that be more of a negotiating process, and would it make it any faster? Um, I know we had had some, some software that it was a small commitment, so it could very much have different legal thresholds. Um, when we had had software, we'd been able to go through and negotiate that with the vendors rather than having to do it as a strict RFP. Um, and my question is, if it's A, allowed, and B, you think there should be an advantage there? Is that something I'd be open to as well?
I think that's a legal question, based on the, on your local ordinance, as to what threshold requires an RFP.
Yes, and I believe you do have to go through the RFP process.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
And, and I think that is true if we are pitching into it. If they're doing a non-exclusive franchise agreement, I mean, both Geneseal Communications and, and MetroNet could show up on the same day and say, "Hey, we want to start building out, and if we sign a non-exclusive with both of them, then they can start building." Uh, but we had, um, standards that if we were going to sign with them, we weren't going to have a situation where anything west of 11th and Rock Island wasn't going to be served, or Watertown wasn't going to be served in East Moline. We said our entire city is going to be served, and that's when things broke down a little bit. And so, I, I think that that is true if we're pitching in, and so that's where that RFP came in, because we were saying, "Hey, give us your, and what are we going to have to pay in to make everybody get covered and meet certain criteria?" And so, that's where...
And that's where I think the real value is going through the consultant and doing it right.
And have the consultant help us.
Because that's what we would be required to do through an RFP, and in that case, we have to have all those ducks in a row beforehand.
Correct.
Um, because I think it was only in the negotiated contracts that came later where we got close to what was going to be a viable contract, and we probably could have asked them to do that.
Correct. So, that's the update, and we do have executive session.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you very much.
Uh, I did forget to mention that, uh, neither IO nor the mayor pro temp can attend a, an Arbor Day, uh, event. Granted, that's normally in the spring, but, uh, I can't quite remember the reason why it's now, but...
Best time to plant trees.
Best time to plant trees. There you go. So, Tuesday, November 16th at 1:00 PM at Public Works, um, we need a council member to read a proclamation. Mr. O'Brien will do it. Got that?
Got it. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, with that...
And actually, the proclamation is attached. If you don't mind, we pass that. Thank you so much.
Go ahead, sir.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of collective negotiating matters, five ILCS 120 slash two, C2.
Second.
All right. Motion by Alderman Williams, seconded by Alderman Went. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. We adjourn?
We adjourn. I know, we're, we're adjourned to executive...